Hey Marcus, Mr. Hagan coming?
I'm late.
Okay, alright. Okay, we'll call the Grantford County Commission meeting to order. It is June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We have all the, where the commissioners here, I guess Mr. Hagan's running a little bit late and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, to look at the minutes, if so, do I have a motion to approve? Rusted to approve the commission second, everybody. Second by Mr. Ringen, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign motions carried. Prove of the order of agenda.
Alright, I'm motioning on a couple of items, okay? On five, G, which wouldn't be the consent agenda, but the Sheriff Stromper, Deputy Sheriff Stromper is here to talk about a grant.
Okay.
So we can put him then just before the Human Service Zone Director, that'd be good.
Okay.
Alright, and then, uh, we'll talk about humans project and so on, you want to talk about a change order on the DX units? And the roof over here, and the courthouse, and then also other courthouse dome issues.
Okay.
So we just wanted to add those items to the agenda.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the order of agenda?
So move with those changes.
Okay. Motion second, anybody? Second by Commissioner Ringen, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three against, same sign. Motion is carried. Number five, approval of the consent agenda. We have bills, employee status changes, overtime, county deeds, may financial report, Grantford Air Force Base, all committee gave of chance permit. Maybe why I think polled or discussed or anything, do I have a motion to approve that? Commissioner Ruston makes the motion. Commissioner Hagan in seconds, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Thank you, Stromper.
Good afternoon. Chief Humpy Stromper appearing for Sheriff Schneider. So this would be a Operation Stone Garden Grant, a partial award for FY twenty-two in the amount of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. It's covering overtime, fringe management, fringe benefits, excuse me, and maintenance and mileage, MMA, MNA to the grant. So I would just ask for Chair's signature, and I think there's eight different places for him to initial on the grant. Haley's had an opportunity to look at it and she's approved with no concern, so I would just ask for that signature initials.
What did you say the amount was?
Eighty-eight thousand nine hundred.
It says eighty-six, three sixty-five on page one.
So I'm looking.
Maybe it's another final number.
I, I don't actually look at it. So I have, uh, what was the number you had?
Eighty-six, on the front page, sixty-five, six, three, six, five. Front page shows up on a couple pages later too.
I just looked at my sheet, not your sheet. That was the sheet that Michelle Olson gave me, so I remember that as well.
Yeah, the sheet would be signing, that would be the eighty-six thousand, three sixty-five.
That was.
Unless you have.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be, I guess, what I would be asking for, signature on the grant for the eighty-six, three sixty-five.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve that? Commissioner Peach?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Speaking of which, Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, thank you. I'm nauseous, but I'll be good. We're starting to start, right?
Yeah. Alright, uh, Human Service Zone Director.
I'll have to bring back up some practice for you. I have two board member applications before you today. Senate Bill twenty-twelve, that bill stated that we were supposed to add a legislator to the Human Service Board. And we found one state representative, Emily O'Brien, who is local. She submitted an application to be on the board, and then we reached out to another community activist, Ms. Doris Libby. She's not a representative or she's not in the legislature, but we wanted to make sure that we had an even number of board members. I mean, we are, one of the things too that I've wanted to, and this Debbie has brought it up on the screen. One of the things that I strive to do as a director was to make sure that we were very diverse in the board, that the demographics of the board also represented the demographics of the citizens that we serve. And making sure that we had very equal representation on the board. So on the board, I'm happy to say that we have someone that is Native American, African American with Ms. Doris joining, Asian descent. We have white, so we are very diverse. We're probably one of the most very diverse boards that we have, also having people from the educational system, law enforcement, medical, education. County Commissioners, Ms. Senator Peach Commissioner sits on the board. So having all of those different backgrounds from the nonprofit, and so I'm asking you to appoint both of these to the Human Service Board with your approval.
Do I have a motion?
I would move to accept Emily O'Brien and Doris Libby onto the Grantford Human Services Zone Board.
Okay, what a second. Second by Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, when does the, uh, Mr. Pickett, when do the terms begin?
It's today.
And there are what like?
Let's do two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Miss, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Some of you may be aware that Mr. Pickett is leaving his position and moving out of state for a new position. And as his own board, uh, person on the board, he's done a tremendous job. I'll report on some of that later for acquaintance, but he will be terribly missed. And I just wanted to give him a, a thank you, and you've done a great job and really thought outside the box. So thank you very much for being here for the last almost year.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Nicole.
Afternoon, Chairman Ross and Commissioners. I am Paul Evans, the Small Business Center Director for the Small Business Development Centers. And it kind of gives you a little bit of program info on page two about who we are, what we do. I am a credential business advisor, been doing this for six years for SBDC. And I also am certified as a QuickBooks trainer, but I also own and run two small businesses of my own. So our goal is to help advise those who wish to get seek funding, get started, of course, the legalities of it, and get their businesses up and running in our small communities. We also, just to show you and you, Mr. Ruston and Hagan, we have a resource guide, this has been handed out in prior years. And it, it's a step-by-step guide for small businesses on exactly kind of where to go, a little bit about entities, some of the things to really watch out for, franchises, you name it, it's got anything related to the business. In twenty twenty-one, we had brought out the Exit Succession Planning Guide. This was a huge initiative that was pushed through the Commerce Department and the lenders and the banks. It was something that we took and put together for the small businesses to start thinking about it. It's kind of weird to say the long, the end run when you're starting the first run. But it's something really important because we do get to that point at some, some part of our business. And then also cybersecurity, which I don't have, but it is also on our website. We have cybersecurity assessments for small businesses so that they become a little bit more in touch with cybersecurity within their business and really honing down on what we have and how it's protected. And we're starting to notice a lot of, you know, cybersecurity issues. It's always been a thing, but it's always increasing. So we have the cybersecurity assessment. We work with Impact Dakota, so any of our manufacturing clients get referred over there as well. We have a workbook, the news and downs, solutions, videos, training. So a lot of our time is also spent really going through with the business on every aspect. Every year, you guys have been really awesome and supportive of the small businesses and supporting our program. So I'd like to thank you very much for that. With me running and owning small businesses, it's pretty, sometimes it can be pretty challenging. So a lot of the things that they go through, I go through as well, which makes it kind of nice process. So thank you very much for your support of SBDC.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there any questions that you guys might have for the program itself? If not, I'm more than happy to answer in any time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Applications for, we could display a fireworks.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we have three applications that have all been approved by the Sheriff's Department. Issues, if you want to take them on at a time or if you want to approve them.
I'll just go, I'll say it one time, I think. Do I have a motion to approve those fireworks permits? Commissioner Ruston, second. Sir Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion is carried. Mr. Gershensky.
Make this information to you. Separate items. First one is my twenty-two, for capital approvals money, one of the items on there was carpet for third floor. Carpet for third floor came in considerably less expensive than was anticipated. And so that cost statements are roughly thirty-nine thousand dollars. I am requesting in front of the board today to to allow me to proceed spending sixteen thousand nine seventy-seven of that money for a system network engine upgrade on the seventh floor of the county office building. That's part of the main system, really management system that Johnson controls, that's operating within the system. And it's, as our old hardware and software continues to age, it's one of the necessary segments to continue in upgrading this in a strategic plan annually in the near years to come. If I could, if I could pursue that, if the commission could allow me to do that with some of that cost savings money that they did not spend on third floor.
Okay. Do I have a motion to allow that? Commissioner Ruston, second. Commissioner Inge, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item, I have packets to hand out that did not get to the, that did not get to the agenda. This was the so it's requested. This is for the courthouse DX cooling upgrade that we have been in project, that was approved project by commission and engineer. These are two change orders that have come too late as the project has, is drawing to a close. One of the change orders is for testing and balancing. The initial testing and balancing, which was included in the project, failed. The air flows, the air flows that are currently programmed into the, into meta systems that were from the energy cocktail that was sold to the commission in two thousand and three are insufficient air flows for our DX units to operate properly. Hence, these new ones will ice up, will cause, and will have some running issues because the airflow is across the portals. The recommendation from the engineer is to reprogram that with engineering services, reprogram the engineered set points back in as opposed to the reduced settings that they are now. Engineering and reprogramming for that will be eleven thousand four hundred fifty dollars. The second segment of this change order request from the engineer is, this project was designed in twenty twenty-two. In twenty twenty-two, it would have passed city inspection under current design. In twenty twenty-three, if you look at the following pages, because of the height of the maintenance platform for electrical access, it will not pass inspection with city inspection without having this additional platform built around it. That being engineered and you listed upon completion is designed by the engineer as it is written. Here is fifty-five thousand one hundred dollars additional change order. Now, I will, full disclosure, he does admit the platform could be too small with a cost reduction to meet city inspection. But then it also takes out an obvious equation for other maintenance. You have spike eyes up on the roof, washing coils, changing condensing pad motors in when they do fail, belt filter maintenance. None of that is required in city inspections, has it, but is recommended by the engineer if you're going to put a platform in, as they designed, is their recommendation rather than just via what city is required. So in talking with Ms. Nelson, this project was funded for capital improvements originally. We have to make money from capital improvements to pay for these change orders. If, is approved by the board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we have about twenty-four thousand dollars in cash.
Alright.
I don't have to spend it, but sometimes we have to.
Yep, we have a second. Commissioner Peach, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Carry.
So on those two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Oh unanimously, yes, okay. It approved unanimously.
Thank you.
On this item particularly in that previous, the project from the commission with signature, on your signature, we required on this, that I'm just asking, does it have a place for it in there? For us, but would that be appropriate for us?
There's no place to.
There is no place for a signature on the contract, but.
The, the motion should be submitted.
Okay, thank you. Third item on the agenda is moving that from Mr. Ford's presentation for the committee met on the architect selection for the courthouse dome project. We interviewed two firms that were, that were interested in being architects, one being Miller Dunwoody, one being Burns Associates. Both presented a very fair and equitable package of qualifications, saying they can do it. The committee unanimously selected Miller Dunwoody. What we are requesting of the commission is to allow us to move forward with getting contracts in place to have that architect in there. So we did contract.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Miller Dunwoody? Okay, Commissioner Ruston, second. Anybody? Commissioner Peach, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All same sign, motion carried unanimously. Mr. West.
Good afternoon. Board, not one request, and it's two tickets for the board. One request would be us to do a supplemental engineering contract for BRJ zero zero one eight four one. That probably doesn't mean much to you, but that's our federal grant project that has four or five bridge structures on it. The DOT is requiring a larger scope of work for the environmental and cultural analysis. Therefore, it's consulting more time to do it. And this is a supplemental agreement for that. This is not cost, telling me money, it's a hundred percent federally paid. And would be the extension of the contract, or whatever the place, my request would be to approve the contract and ask for auditors and chairmen.
Okay, so I have a motion. Commissioner Hagan, second. Commissioner Peach, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. So then, Chairman Ross, that mail would try, signature again.
Oh yeah, is that coming up again?
That, that's this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I haven't seen it on my.
Okay. Or is it in your email?
I have, but he shouldn't get it first.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, well, we'll make sure to get it reset to you.
Okay.
And then, so you could send that. Two other tidbits is, uh, or three tidbits, I guess, culverts in our yard, we moved most of them, we're in the process of moving a couple more and clean up yard a little bit to make some more parking space.
For the fair.
Fair. This morning, Trail County Commission meeting, I didn't go, but there's a new grant opportunity program through the DOT that's called the Flexible Transportation Fund. That's just the recent legislature approved, that the DOT is charged with running the grant program, and they're working on the criteria. However, Eagle Avenue, hundred and twenty-five, paving by rentals would actually be a good fit. We feel so far, we haven't seen the final criteria, but based on the preliminary criteria that was introduced during legislation, would probably be a good fit. So their board approved applying for the application. I don't know if it even costs us any money to apply, maybe pay consultant a little bit to do that, but it's a no-brainer to go after it, and we'd recommend you do that. It'll be a late summer application. That's all I know for time line, so. A portion for that, or it's kind of a thumbs up, or.
Were you applying for it?
Well, we, well, we would, I would coordinate with Trail County.
Okay.
And one application for that one project. And there's all, there's other projects that Groundworks County could apply on. I would look at the criteria once we get it and see what we would have that would work. And we apply for separately, but that would be a joint application for that one project. One criteria is multiple jurisdictions. That's what they're kind of after, these more challenging projects, so if we think we'd have a chance.
Oh.
He could do a motion if he liked, but I don't.
We do, because it's a, it's not a crosshair, it's a grass, it's all or nothing, isn't it? So I'm good.
Can be honest with you, I'm not sure. Don't know the criteria, if they would fund it a hundred percent or a percentage, so. I think once we get the criteria that comes out here in a couple months, I can come back to the board and if it would have some cost share, a, a, a cost share for us, we can analyze it at that time, but.
Okay.
Alright. The third tip, the other third thing is, I, I'd like to hand something, I'm not going to ask for a decision, but an update and informational and wanting to get, follow something off, you get your opinion here. The manhole shed, so I know the last couple meetings, we talked about it. And we were gonna bid a new, to build a whole new building. Immediately after, I think it was a meeting, either last meeting or a month ago, immediately after somebody approached me and said, well, why don't we just build a new one across the alleyway? Leave the old one, it's older stuff, yeah. Little struggle on here. Yeah. And it's actually a really good idea. So the first step I did was, we didn't know the property lines, so I had to survey it, go to and locate the property lines. And, and the property lines of our current property. Because it, our proposed building wouldn't fit, well then it's going to be pointless. So the property corners were located. We went out there and wheeled off what a good sized building would be, and guess it would fit. Curveball is seeing a manhole in the problem. So the obvious question is, well, would they support? So I've contacted the mayor and two of the council members, and verbally they would support the county putting a building there. Matter of fact, they didn't even know that they owned it. They just thought the county owned it because we've been using it this whole time. We parked attachments out there and that will pile the dirt or whatnot out there. And so I would, it will, the benefit is a few different things. One, the existing building does have some value. And it could remain just as simply cold storage, and the attachments we would have sitting outside the plows, various plows and other attachments, motorbenders have or patchers, that you go inside, and we could have them inside a shed, there just isn't room for it. The other thing for the same square footage is we could better utilize it. We could get three pieces of equipment in there versus only two when it's narrow and long. We make it more rectangle and put different door configuration on there. We could better utilize it. So there's a number of benefits. The only negative I can see is, one, the clear one is our sewer and water line, to get to the building, it has to come from Oldham Avenue, so it's a longer sewer, it's a longer service connection. Pretty minor. And two would be is what the city man will want for it. If they want a substantial amount of money for it, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable standing here. We'll just go back to our previous plan and tear down and build anyone in the same spot. So my purpose for bringing this up is one, to let you know this is being thought about. Get your opinion, if you have any concerns, or if this is a dumb idea, and we should just go back to the previous plan. And, but, seeing a manhole, and you know what comes out of this meeting, they've mentioned they could do a special meeting next week and make a decision, otherwise it's July tenth. I'm hoping if, if this board is generally okay with the concept that a special meeting next week is clocks ticking. And I'd like to make a decision one way or another, and I, I'm exploring this and delaying the project because it is a good idea to look at.
I think you should wait to see what the city council man will say about that one.
I have a question for Mr. Ross. Familiar with surveying in small towns, it looks like manhole, we own property, that's in the American Leeson building.
Yeah, they're.
Survey?
Yep.
That's how it is in lots of different places.
Yep, and the community museum, I thought that was the city museum, but it's just a group of local historians. Apparently there was some handshake, you know, that, telling you, let this museum be on our property. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know if we want to do anything with American Legion, sell them. Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know if we want to do anything with American Legion, sell them to feed a property. Does it feed a property or just let it be?
I think they've, it's it's probably been a lot, a lot of years and they've been there all time. I don't think they need to worry much about us.
I think our two organizations can get along quite well. Our shed's been there since nineteen forty-nine, so.
Mr. West, cost. Well, is is it a highway cost or will there be any additional costs?
It would be funded the exact same way as the previous shed. I don't think it'd be any more money, substantially.
Maybe they'll give it to us, one dollar.
Well, the one council member did say that. I'll just give it to you. We didn't even know you had it. You guys have been using it for ever anyway. And we're so appreciative of what we do for the city and, you know, play the gravel, follow the snow. We got two great operators out there that. Get on well in the community and.
Thank you.
Thank you, that is all.
Chairman Ross and Member of the Commission. My topic I have today, as Commissioner Peach mentioned earlier. Our Human Service Zone Director Antoine Pickett will be leaving us at the end of the month. We needed to come forward and ask about a transition plan. So I've worked with Haley and with the board. And the board would like to keep Mr. Pickett in a part-time position. Through the transition with a limited scope of duties. I have sent out some information regarding research that Haley and I were doing. Um, we found some extensive re, she did some extensive research on the century code, but whether or not. Mr. Pickett could stay as the director and work in different capacities. It's been determined that he would not stay as the director. There would be two interim directors, co-directors appointed. Um, and that would be Tracy Van Beeck and Luella Hart, who've been here for quite some time. They would like to keep him in a consulting. Role under a part-time temporary employment. Currently, I would need permission from the commission to move forward with investigating for this position only. Employing someone in North Carolina. Um, the the other option would be to do it under an independent contractor. The board spoke at length about the different things that they would like. How they would like to handle it. Um, I I am aware what it would cost. And the cost would be borne by the zone regarding a worker's compensation policy. For the period of time that he would be employed as an emergency temporary. Also, I've been in contact with multiple people in the state government at, um, in North Carolina. So I now know the steps that we would need to do to have a remote employee that's working a hundred percent of his time in North Carolina. It may take a little bit of time to get that in place. But it is, right now, it looks like it would be doable. And as long as we would show that we're started applications and things, there should be limited risk. To any kind of a wage and hour type of a plan. If anyone has any questions as to the thought process about temporary. Employee versus an independent contractor, we do have the vice chair. To now Reginald here to speak on behalf of the board and also we have Commissioner Peach. So we'd like to know if you approve having him continue in a capacity. And then do you approve for me to seek out what it would take to be the employer in North Carolina? And Commissioner Peach has some specific motion language. Could I open it up for discussion and questions? And if you'd like, this is Reginald, can you come up?
I guess I want this one, this is just until we find another director.
Correct. This would be starting July first. And extending up to sixty days after a new director would be hired to help with back warm handoff in transition.
We have a couple motions that were approved at the Human Service Zone. Board level and these motions also need to be approved here at the commission level. The first motion would be Tracy Van Beeck and Luella Hart be are would be appointed as co-interim directors. Effective July first, twenty twenty-three and until a new director is hired. That would be the first motion. And so I would move, um, make that motion.
Okay, I have second to that motion. Commissioner Hagan, they, all was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The second motion would be that we transition Antoine Pickett to an emergency temporary employee. Effective July first, capped at seven hundred and twenty hours for the duration of two months. Post time of hiring a new director. That position is currently, um, open right now. And so I would make that motion on behalf of the commission.
Okay, do I have a second to that motion? Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried unanimously.
And thank you very much to Mr. Pickett and to the Human Service Zone Board for, um, wanting to quickly get this. In motion. Um, Mr. Pickett will shift last day, it will be July first. And we wish him well if he relocates to North Carolina out of the state of North Dakota, which will be missed.
Now, I do have a question. Do we need a motion approving my pursuing having. Us be an employer in North Carolina for this specific temporary position?
I think it would be appropriate for it to be part of the motion. Correct me if I'm wrong, the motion contingent on us.
Yeah, so it could be part of the motion that I made.
It's really a motion to amend.
Okay, a motion to amend that to include the, uh, having an employer located in North Carolina. For this specific position.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same signs. Okay. Okay. The reports. Mr. Rusted. Okay, Commissioner Hagan.
Also, no, no.
Okay, Commissioner Peach.
The Human Service Zone Board meeting, um, we just had prior to this meeting, spent quite a bit of time. Doing some reviews. Um, our our staffing numbers are pretty good, but we still have a few positions. That are open. Um, and hopefully we can get that done. There is some, a meeting that will take place on. Uh, Thursday and Mr. Pickett will find out about what kind of, uh, what kind of in. Increase in wages that we will be able to see that are paid by the state in on the zone board. There's also some additional dollars that are going to be available. For, uh, certain counties that don't have a large tax base. And we probably won't be getting any of those funds because, um, it would examples would be a smaller county. Uh, much of the property in some of the counties are have Native American land and they don't have a strong tax base. So they're putting some additional funds into those counties. We don't feel that that will get any of those funds. Of the think that they will be announcing on Thursday, the increase of about six percent. For the state paid employees in the zone board. And that's been discussed throughout the last legislative session. So we're pretty sure that that's going to go through and that'll be at the state level, that that six percent will take place, which is good. Because they need to bring up their market as well as we at the county level need to bring up our market too. Children's services, of course, we have a a large number of children in foster care. Of course, numbers tend to go down in the summer because school isn't in place. And so, um, we did see a number go down based from twenty twenty-two and from January through June of twenty twenty-three. Because once we get into the non-school months, um, usually a lot of the, the numbers tend to escalate. When kids are in school from faculty and things making suggestions. Other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Hagan.
Nothing since last week's special meeting.
Yeah.
Meetings all the time.
Yeah.
But, uh, this Friday, the change of command, the wing commander out to airbase and everyone invited to that. And, uh, next week, the fun starts, we start budget meetings.
Yeah. Yeah, and it will be fun. All right, I have nothing, so. I'm finished, new business.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have the, uh, financing resolution for the limited tax capital project bonds for. The courthouse dome project. Uh, I need a motion to approve that financing resolution and. Allow the chair to sign all the closing documents.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a probably solid motion. Could approve the issue of five hundred, five hundred dollars limited tax capital projects fund, bond, series twenty twenty twenty-three. Twenty-three. And then the chair sign on whatever documents that are necessary to.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Peach. Any questions? All was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, the next two items are two new and expanding business exemptions and there will be a public hearing on July fifth. Regarding these two properties. Um, I don't know if we need to make a motion at this time. Or you just be aware that there's a public hearing.
Chairman, as members of the commission, I believe the city would be looking for a formal motion out of, out of this board, uh, to bring forward to the public hearing. That's sent for, uh, our city council, uh, five thirty meeting on July fifth. And I do have information related to, um, the pilot. If you're interested, I can pull through the numbers. If you have questions, they also have city planner Ryan Brooks here as well. If there's any questions as to these projects.
Any questions? I don't think any. It doesn't really even present to the board at all yet, so. Chairman Ross and I are. Means we've seen both of these, but I think you need to explain what it's all about for the rest of the commission.
Sure, um, then I have a handout. Uh, this first one. And this next one is Memorial Village. So the first we can use is a bean crushing plant, uh, that is, um. What I can do is, I think I might have, uh, Mr. Brooks come here and just review the, the project, um. With you and then I can go through the numbers as far as, um, what the expected, um, taxable value will be on that and what it means to the. The ground works pony. This was presented as a local government advisory committee, uh, on May twenty-second. Um, with the group and and the gate favor. Um, this did come forward to city council then on June fifth. And set that public hearing for July fifth. Um, but maybe what I can do first, um, starting with the, the bean crushing plant to epitome. Just I'll go through the numbers with you and what that means to the ground force pony, uh, and what has been approved, um, to date to go forward to the. Public hearing. Um, really what we're looking at doing with these projects too is, you know, trying to get to increase that taxable value. Base to to try to take some of the burden off of the residents and grow industry and really grow that tax base that we have as far as the city and the county. Um, but with that, uh, the epitome project is estimated, um, to have a post-project value for improvements of a hundred and seventy-five million. With a land value of four million, so that total of a hundred and seventy-nine, uh, million dollars all in at the end. Um, what I will say is that these are all based on estimates. Um, of course, it'll go through the annual valuation process. Um, also with these projections, it's based on the current levies that stand, uh, and project forward. We do have a one percent inflationary growth factor figured in these numbers as well. But with that said, and with this, um, project, a little bit different than others that you've seen, this actually sits in the Mandel School District. So that would be the school district that, um, would benefit from the increased, um, values with this project. So basically, um, to go through the numbers there, what we listed is what that true and value, full value is estimated to be, and we break it out. Between land and, um, improvements. Um, land is not subject to exemption, so that's fully taxable. Um, day one, so you can see there, uh, a breakout of the estimated tax. Uh, from that land and from the improvements. What, um, came forward for approval was a fifteen-year eighty-three percent tax exemption. So these numbers are based on that shaded area is that seventeen percent taxable portion. Uh, like I said, of course, the, the land being hundred percent taxable and then, um, going forward. Based on those estimates, uh, and assumptions, what that is valued going forward. You can see the county, uh, shared here, which also loves to add small amount for this week, uh, that would be estimated. In year twenty twenty-six then, uh, an increased, um, tax portions of roughly a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Um, after all is said and done, uh, and that exemption rolls off about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So that's in a nutshell, uh, with that bean plant. If you have any questions about that first before I move on to other, otherwise I could. Some of the numbers on the Memorial Village as well. Maybe what I'll do then, if.
Should I? You want to do these one at a time? Motion. Or we were just here in both again.
And it's kind of like you're involved and so we still have to do different motion.
Yes, we do. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So with Memorial Village, um, in that project, we also have developer, uh, here as well, as human representative on this project, if there's. Uh, questions related to, to this, um, Memorial Village two project, um, that also includes a softball, uh, field. Uh, so with that, the, the nice thing about this is it turns, um, a non-taxable piece of property into a taxable piece of property. So right now, no taxes being collected on, on this land. Um. We have an estimated value here, uh, at project completion of thirty-four million. This, um. Same as the other, it's based on, uh, we have a one percent inflationary factor, the current mill values and estimates, uh, on that value. Each year, we would go through the normal process of setting what those actual value issues are, as well as the mill levies of the different entities. Um, so with this, uh, what's coming forward to the public hearing is a twenty-year ninety-five percent exemption. It also involves a loan with the city, but that's, um, nothing the, the county has to decide on your part is that, uh, ninety-five percent exemption. And as you can see in those, uh, and of course, the land, um, being a hundred percent taxable. And not subject to the exemption. So the county share there, um, of that tax, uh, roughly twelve thousand and then all is said and done. Right around that hundred and seventy thousand dollar mark. So that's the numbers I do have, uh, Mark, I said, city planner Ryan Brooks here. That can speak more to project-related questions. And we also have Kevin Riedemann here, Mike Paper from ELYD. Thank you.
Any questions from anybody?
Commissioner, yeah, I've got a question. These two are treated differently. And I, I must, I'm always in favor of these pilot programs or, or, uh, incentives. But with the Memorial Village one, it's twenty years. Uh, ninety-five percent with epitome, it's fifteen years, eighty-three percent. I'm wondering why the difference. And how that relates to some of, the Memorial Village one that we did, what, a few years ago? That the same as what's being offered in this one, or can you explain those differences or? That the same as what's being offered in this one, or can you explain those differences or?
Sure. Members of the commission. So really what we do is we have a third-party financial advisor that we hired to really do that buck four test. So but for the exemption, the project won't move forward. So we really rely on that objective third-party opinion when we're looking at these. And and with, and that's your differences that you're seeing between Memorial Village one versus Memorial Village two. We look at those recommendations from current and what that project can really afford and how it can work for. As far as industry, we treat that a little bit different. That's more of a negotiation between parties and and bringing that industry in for growth and city that work for. So that is a, you know, that industry is separate or distinct from a memorial village.
I, the only other thing that I would say in terms of the industry, we did look at other projects in eastern North Dakota, take a look at Spiritwood and Castleton. And it looked like this, this seemed to be the going rate, if you will, of those projects to kind of help them. We don't do a full buck four analysis, which is pretty common on those economic development projects. And in terms of the Memorial Village two, it is a little bit different. The Memorial Village one is the softball complex, which has a fee on that that the developers happen to recover. So that's, that's why a little bit bigger bump on that.
Good point. And there was, we tried to structure that epitome similar to other bean crushing, you know, facilities that have recently helped to march along. And with the, the only other thing I'll point out with that softball, you know, with the public use, I believe there'd be shared use with the community as far as usage of that field.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right, take them one at a time. The epitome first. Do I have a motion? By Commissioner Peach, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ina. Hey, comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mark, did you vote? Okay. All right, now we've got the Memorial Village, it's gonna be a motion. Recuse yourself in that one, okay?
I appreciate Mr. Rassiter bringing this up. If you recall, he brought this up when this topic first came up several months ago. And I did some little research on the subject of recusing herself, just to remind the board, generally speaking, a member of a government body who is president has a duty to vote unless excused by law. If a conflict rises to the level of direct and subs- a direct and substantial personal or pecuniary interest, the elected official must disclose that to the board, which Mr. Rust is done. And then the remaining uninterested commissioners must then make a determination whether to consent to the interested members' participation in voting on the particular matter, which would essentially waive the conflict of interest and permit the official to vote on that.
Okay.
But but it's acceptable to recuse yourself, yeah, in any situation like this, right? Nothing wrong with Mark. Doing that, no.
That's correct, but then the remaining uninterested commissioners must make a determination whether to consent to their participation in voting on that matter.
Right. Yeah, okay, so did I have a motion? On Memorial?
We didn't have a motion.
Okay, yes, nope. Mr. Ringan makes the motion, second Commissioner Peach. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Commissioner Rust is, of course, recuse himself, so. We got four yeses. All right. All right, thank you. Facilities.
Chair, members of the commission, notifying you that we were approved for that.
Forty-six thousand.
Has the reduced scope, I think you changed your line, so the total of the ground modified award was one hundred forty-six thousand two, two hundred and forty dollars. So I don't know.
Then nothing else be done, it's just an information.
Yeah, we already talked about that.
Okay.
All right, Grand Forks County meat board.
Mister Chair, members of the commission, I have advertised the month of May for the unexpired term on the meat board. So they don't have, they have a vacancy there. I have ratted in the city groups, I did the legos and the Grand Forks Herald, and also we had it on social media. And we got no one. Oh, I think I'd like to fill that position. I talked to the weed board and said, do you know anybody? And they don't know anybody. I could maybe advertise in the smaller papers, Northwood and Laramore, and see what happens.
Yeah.
I can share it, yeah, good idea. Northwood's deadline is Thursday, so you have you have time to work, we'll add it to them, so, yeah.
I will do that.
Yeah. People just don't know about the opening, you know?
No.
Weed board is as much work, so it's all the other boards, like Waterboard and whatever, so.
Yeah.
It's not an easy job.
For sure. All right, fair board. You're up.
I have an updated agreement that I can pass around. There's, please grab a agreement and exhibits. Also. Provided to the fair or.
This is what you said, I printed it today, same thing? You're making changes today?
No, I made changes today. We thought said the changes are are pretty minor. I can review once you each of you get a copy in hand. Oh, thank you. So the the short summary is is the only change that has come about since the last copy that was sent, I think, last Wednesday, is that we have, based on some inquiries that the fair board raised, we visited with the engineers and surveyor and determined that replating of this parcel is no longer necessary. If you recall, the fair board's signature on that replat was a condition in in this agreement. And so in light of learning that information, I took that portion out since we no longer need that. So where the changes are in the document is that that replat was referenced in the recitals on page one. So I struck that paragraph that referenced that. It was also referenced in section six of the agreement, or excuse me, section five of the agreement under additional covenants. I believe it was paragraph four, the previous paragraph four stated that the fair board would have to sign that replat, struck that paragraph as well. And then the only other area where it's changed is that replat was previously in the exhibits packet as exhibit D. I took that out and just inserted this page is intentionally left blank because I didn't want it to mess up our numbering of the other exhibits moving forward. So we have an exhibit D, but it, there isn't one. So that's the only change that was made since the last copy that went out last Wednesday. On, just to update, what what was updated after our last meeting is there was the concern brought that the fair board wished to have two dump stations for sanitary sewer for the vendors and things like that that had RVs parked. That was worked into this agreement that I made, that I emailed out last Wednesday. And it continues to be in this agreement under the additional covenants. I believe that is paragraph nine in the additional covenants. It's also my understanding that Icon and construction engineers will work that into their plans so that that is incorporated into the expansion of the correctional center and juvenile detention center when they complete that. Mister Wesley and Mister Monson from construction engineers and Icon are also on Zoom. And I believe we have someone here from construction engineers as well, so if I misstate anything, just feel free to interrupt me. So I I think that's taking care of. The other concern that was raised at our last meeting was we talked about some of the electrical supply and connections. I apologize if I'm using the wrong terms. I'm sorry, I don't need the next word in electrician work. That was added to the agreement that was sent out last Wednesday. That's in section five under the additional covenants. And paragraph eight. With that said, when I sent this out last Wednesday, I wanted to get some language on paper for the fair board to review because they were meeting that Wednesday evening. We hadn't fully diagnosed the problem, I guess, for lack of better, or at least some county had understood the problem. So paragraph eight provides that the county shall furnish electrical supply that's reasonably necessary. What we learned after that is Icon works with Excel Energy. Essentially, Excel Energy says from their end, the supply coming to the property is sufficient. But then the fair board had done some prior work a number of years back where they identified, and Mister Kassager, chime in if I misstate the 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 details, but basically, once the electricity supply is on the property, how it's routed is the thing that's causing problems. So that's why it's not a Excel Energy issue, but an issue of how it's set up on the property, for lack of better terms. So I visited with Mister Kassager. He's done a lot of research and and touch base with some electricians on this. Their organization had a quote from a number of years ago from some electricians. He reached out to one of them that had the most reasonable bid previously and asked them to update that. And they were able to do so, and that's the documentation that I sent out to the board yesterday. I believe the total was about one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from that individual. So today, Mister Wesley from Icon Construction Engineers, Mister Ford, myself, and Mister Josh Grindy from Right Choice Electric, he was the entity that submitted the updated bid. We all visited to get a better understanding of what this one hundred and sixty dollar bid included. The short story is, is that most of it is to address the safety concerns that was raised at our last meeting with the fair board. He estimated that it would be approximately ninety to a hundred thousand dollars that is addressing some of those safety concerns, the fires that have been happening and things like that. You may be noticed on the bid, there's a portion that called for upgraded LED lights and things like that that he kind of referred to as icing on the cake, for lack of better terms. And so with that said, even though it's icing on the cake, he did indicate that it's kind of a a package deal. The price is if we do everything together. And one thing we inquired about is I visited with some of you over the last several days. It sounds like the concern is the safety issues on the property. And so we asked if he could kind of parse out what addresses safety and what doesn't. And he indicated that hundred, up to a hundred thousand dollars was addressing those safety items. And if others have a different recollection, or if I'm misstating anything, please feel free to chime in. So one thing I would note is that that isn't included in this land use agreement, just because it evolved in time. And what I had shared with Mister Kassager is that we present them together so that the board could consider the land use agreement and that proposed bid at the same time.
Questions from anybody? Fair board satisfied with these terms?
So, I mean, it it's a it stems back to the the initial jail with the line that got taken out and put back in. And then, I guess, how everything is routed. Then, of course, with Mister Grindy basically saying that there, the safety issue, there's the way it's set up now, there's no way to shut that off unless you have Excel Energy come out and actually get on the truck and disconnect it on the pole, which is a good scenario.
I would also note that Mister Grindy from Right Choice, he offered to be available by phone should anyone have any questions about the details of of his bid proposal as well. He he likewise shared the same things that Mister Kassager just.
Well, that's what it's all about, safety.
I have a question. This kind of came up last week. We get an estimate from one place. It's pretty quick to decide that we're gonna spend money with that particular bit, just seems to me. We should have someone else take a look at it as well. I I don't have any objection to fixing things. But we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars of what capital improvements that we would have no idea we'd be thinking about. So, Ms. Nelson, where was this money come from?
Mister Chairman, Commissioner Reagan. Was this to be part of the project or was it separate from the project?
We, correctional center project. And now some members of the board, I inquired with the Icon and construction engineers folks. Their recommendation is that it be addressed in the separate item. And I don't want to speak for them, so please chime in if if I misstate anything. My understanding is our our budget on the project is is nearing the top end. And also, I think, visiting this morning between the two entities, for lack of better terms, they're not really going to be digging in the same dirt. This is going to be moreover on the fairgrounds property, out of the way of of where the contractors will be working on the correctional center. I think they did kind of outline with each other some areas where they they might be working near each other, but generally, they won't interfere or or one person's work won't be dug up by the others or, you know, things like that. So their recommendation was to be, was to have it as a separate, you know, distinct project.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I had another contractor with me a couple meetings ago that was there, or was there, that was Bergstrom Electric. He's aware of that. Going on there. When you brought up, where are you going to get the money from? You know, we always said that that road could be just left gravel that you want the easement on. Because that's the best road out there. And of course, when Keith and I went to visit with Mister Wesley out at Icon, he's involved with the heavy loads that's going to be on it. They would like to have a concrete.
Yeah.
Or just saying in large truck and heavy loads, but those large trucks are hauling the latest race cars in the county. I mean, they're not heavy loads going in there like.
Right, but we're talking some, the electrical would be separate from the construction, and that would be construction, so.
And I understand that, but that would be a big savings if you left the gravel and you've already stopped the concrete pit, then you've gone down the pavement. And why don't you leave it gravel? Because the city won't allow it. The city won't allow it? Unless you only wrote out there that, that we don't have problems with the frost piles, right? No, it's in, it's in that agreement, the city won't allow it because it's to get to the dumpsters. Plus, you have to regrade everything around there.
Yeah, don't, don't try and figure it out.
Kind of like you got three billion you're supposed to spend, you know, trying to save your buck and you don't take it.
I know. What's the wishes?
Where am I that would come from capital permits? We had two eighty four before we spent the sixty six thousand dollars, so. That's where we're at.
What's the wishes of the board?
I would move that we move approval of the fairgrounds we land use screen.
Okay, is there a second to that? Second by Commissioner Rustin?
Comment? I would like to and I'll, I'm in favor of this motion, but I really would like to take another look at how much it's going to cost. We literally got one bid. And I don't think it'll take long for Burgestrom or someone else to take another one.
Yeah, okay, that will be another motion.
That's a separate.
Yeah. Okay, this is just the, the lease. All right, okay. And so the electrical is not part of. All right, any other questions for anybody? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried unanimously.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think thank you needs to go to State's Attorney Mopset because she did put a lot of work on this use agreement and. It comes with thank you for your work.
I guess the next question is, do we have a deal? Are we done?
Yeah, the president needs to sign it, right?
No, she will.
Okay, and Debbie, you're a notary, right?
We are notary right here.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And then to the electrical, we have had Burgestrom Electric as, you know, a bit, which was kind of staying in line. And Right Choice has done a lot of that. They were, they were always called when we have these emergency things, so they, they know, lived it. And I guess that's kind of why we want to keep them involved.
All right, so, so the next issue is the electrical. So we're talking one hundred thousand, roughly?
Hundred and sixty, what?
The emergency stuff was a hundred thousand, right?
Said ninety to a hundred, but it's the board.
But would it, would it be difficult to have Burgestrom also look at this?
I think Mr. Kassager already said he can have a look at it.
Yeah, they haven't given the bid or anything happened.
Well, they haven't given this updated yet, I guess, because we just got this done in short order from last week, so.
So for clarification, from my conversation with Mr. Kassager, they did solicit a number of bids previously. I think it was in two thousand eighteen, does that sound right?
Yeah.
And I think from what Mr. Kassager shared is that Right Choice was the lowest responsible bidder at that point in time. And so that's why last week he just reached out to them to get the updated bid with the, the today's value or whatever.
And that's, I go along with that, that's right. What Bill said is correct, we've had several of them. The only reason that Burn was always out there is one of my best friends and I could get work from him for free. He was the number one, the old guy when everything was, was well started, or whatever.
Mr. Rustin, it sounds like there's a relationship with selector that probably has a lot to do with the reason why they were the lowest. If they're the ones coming out responding when there's fires and other things. I don't know, we're going to be much better, are we going to? I would vote for them. With Right Choice. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Commissioner Hagan. Discussion?
Want to exceed a hundred thousand?
Yeah, yeah, want to exceed a hundred thousand. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yeah. You want to? Signs here. As long as the notaries are all signed too. Eighty four eight. Let's be talker.
Let's get again, do the copy for this. I got to email for Ali, I go to printer.
Might as well say he recorded, it's on.
I want to get some pad.
Do I need to fill my, drink my name in this?
It'll sit here.
We do, we need a parking attendant on.
Hey, I'll get my vest on, my flag.
Can I ask you a question?
I mean, we'll have to just know that we're signing this. So I can take a millimeter.
I'll be taking them on shortly. I'll be carrying them all shortly.
Can we ask a question on that, we, the board deals?
I was going to nominate you.
Did we spray her leaf spurge? Because I noticed when I was going to Minnesota last week, they were spraying.
I think.
So, the person to ask, yeah, I think the person to ask would be Joel Anderson. And his whole number is like.
Thank you.
Yeah, seven hours.
Dig in tomorrow? Dig in tomorrow?
We have the fair going on this week.
Yeah, we got one more item.
To a jury. Responding.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.